All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think we'll get started. I see, I believe my two co-hosts have joined us and several other counselors have, and more will be joining, but we have a very jam-packed hour ahead of us. So I wanted to be respectful of everyone's time. But just to kick things off, I wanted to thank each and every one of you. I'm looking around this Zoom screen and I see so many friends, people I've literally known for long before I was in office. And it's a great celebration as Hispanic Heritage Month comes to an end that Counselors Mejia, Counselor Arroyo, and I have invited this virtual event. Special shout out to Andrea Campbell, who when she was Council President did an in-person celebration at the end of the month. And for obvious safety protocols, we're doing it virtually, but we're already seeing, gosh, 52 participants and more will be joining us. So, you know, obviously from the bottom of my heart, I am just so grateful and lucky that for the last 11 years, I've been the voice of District Six here and City Council. I'm incredibly proud of the team and the work that we've done. And one of the things that I'm most proud of is working with many of you, many folks on this call, on establishing Boston's Latin Quarter in Jamaica Plain, something I was incredibly proud to have done, working with the Hyde Square Task Force. I see Claudio here, working with great organizations like JPNDC. I see Carlos here, like so many groups to really encapsulate the vibrancy and the diversity of our city and our district. And, you know, I often tell the story, I was very lucky. Lucky, I grew up in Rosendale. My mom was a school teacher, Blessed Sacrament School, and I remember going to that church for a bilingual midnight mass. It was twice as long, but it was just so wonderful. And to see Hyde Square, you know, in the 1980s and 1990s, to hear the music, to eat the food, to really appreciate and learn so much about the Latinx community, about the Hispanic community, it's just been such an incredible honor for me. And I'm just really grateful in my waning days on this body as your Council President pro tempore, to be able to partner with two great colleagues to really celebrate and mark Hispanic Heritage Month. So we have a video that we're going to get to, but before that, I wanted to invite my two co-hosts for a couple of words, and then I think we have a couple of other counselors who will be joining. So begin with my Bani Leha sister, Counselor-at-Large Julia Mejia. Welcome. Did you have any opening remarks for our friends, Counselor?
Sí, buenos días a todos. Everybody knows que me he un hermanito de Bani y siempre ha representado la República Dominicana con mucho orgullo. So shout out for those who need translation, just really incredibly grateful to be here with you all, with my brother from Bani, Matt O'Malley, who's always been alongside the Dominican community. So incredibly grateful for the opportunity to be here with you, Matt, and our colleagues celebrating all of the amazing work that our esteemed invited guests and honorees are going to be presented here today. Muchas gracias. Latino Heritage Month is a month, but you know, every day, all day is Latino pride. So really incredibly grateful to be here with you all. I wanted to throw out one little fact here is that this is the first time in the history of the Boston Council that we have two, two city counselors representing the Latino community, which is huge. And I like to always note that I'm the old, I'm the first non-Aroyo to win and be elected to the council. So we are making strides and really incredibly grateful to be here with you all this afternoon. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Counselor Ricardo Arroyo from District Five, our other co-host, welcome. Please, the floor is yours to help kick things off, Counselor.
I appreciate it, and I hope everybody can hear me clearly. Really happy to be here with all of you. I see so many of my favorite people on this Zoom, so I'm excited about this. I'm excited about this video that we got coming up. This is a new format due to COVID, and I think the video format that we went with actually is really going to be pretty awesome and might be something we incorporate on the in-person one in the future. But I'm really thrilled to be here. It's un orgullo ser bonito, and to do this job and represent our community, any day we get to celebrate it, folks know this is a 365 situation for Latinos. We weigh more than a month out here. And so I'm very much happy to be here with y'all. I'm looking forward to this. We're honoring some really wonderful people, some of my favorite people today. And I just want to say to you all, honestly, y'all inspire the work that we do, certainly the work I do. And so I'm really thrilled to see you guys get your roses today. You deserve them, and I deeply appreciate y'all. So thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much. A couple more counselors who wish to say a quick hello. We'll begin with Counselor Ed Flynn from District Two. Counselor Flynn, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Julia, and thank you, Ricardo, for hosting this wonderful celebration. And also to our colleagues in central staff, but also to the award recipients, the recipients that are going to be recognized today. We're so proud of the work that you do every day throughout the neighborhoods of Boston. We're proud of you. We're proud to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Boston, and we're so proud of the contributions and sacrifices you make for our city and country as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Liz Braden from District Nine, Austin Brighton, welcome, Counselor Braden.
Good morning, everyone. I'm so excited to be here with everyone this morning and celebrate the incredible contributions of the Hispanic community in Austin, in Austin Brighton, but all across our city as well. This is a wonderful event, and I'm sorry we're not in person, so we can give hugs and appreciate and celebrate each other in person, but this is a great substitute. So thank you so much for organizing this, and thank you to Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Arroyo and Counselor Mejia for organizing this and leading this effort. And I'm so excited to hear all the, hear everyone's presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Counselor Lydia Edwards from District One, welcome, Counselor Edwards.
Hola gente, soy vendedora de Distrito Uno, y estoy aquí hablando en portugués porque a veces no lembra que la comunidad de Latino está incluyendo brasileños. Yo no soy brasileño, pero aprendí y hablo portugués, entonces también la lengua de esta cultura. So I'm Maria, I'm a District One. I speak, I chose to speak in Portuguese, it's one of the many beautiful languages within the Hispanic-Latino community. And I wanted to make sure we didn't forget that large community today as we celebrate all of the, all of the contributions, the history, the patriotism, the love, what has made so much of our country great, which is of course our Latin brothers and sisters. So I'm here to celebrate, and I'm very excited for this. And I can't wait to see the video because, well, it's all hyped up now, so. And I'm also, I'm honored to represent, of course, East Boston, which has one of the largest Latinx populations. Many are from Central America, and it's just wonderful to see us celebrate constant contributions of all of us.
Well said, and the video will not disappoint. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. At-Large Counselor Michael Flaherty, welcome, Counselor Flaherty.
Hola, ¿cómo estás mis amigos? Thank you to my colleagues, Counselor President O'Malley, and to Counselors Ricardo Arroyo and Julia Mejia for hosting today's luncheon, and many thanks to our wonderful central staff for helping out and putting this great video together. Hispanic Heritage Month is another opportunity to celebrate the diverse Hispanic community in Boston, as well as their great contributions to our city. And I'm honored today to, and every day, quite frankly, to recognize Milagros Marte and Pita Quenca, and can't wait to see their videos as well. So thank you and look forward to the show.
Thank you, Michael. Well said. Counselor Kenzie Bach from Beacon Hill, District Eight, welcome, Counselor Bach.
Thank you so much, Matt, and thank you for organizing this, and to Ricardo and Julia for co-hosting. I also represent Mission Hill, and I'm just so proud to represent the Hispanic community there, especially in Mission Main and Mission Park, and really thrilled today that we've got, sorry to so much traffic noise behind me, really glad today to honor Mr. T and Millie and looking forward to the videos. So, yeah, es un honor representar el barrio de Mission Hill, y la comunidad latina es central en nuestro corazón, yo creo que en toda ciudad de Boston. Entonces, yeah, thanks everybody for being here, and I'm happy to be here as well.
Thank you, Kenzie. I believe that's it for counselors. If there is a counselor I missed, because now we're up to 66 participants, just let me know, others will come. I know Counselor Baker sends his best, he's got a family event right now, and Counselor Campbell will be coming a little bit later. Before we get, the program is going to be, we're going to get to the video shortly, and then we're going to sort of open it up for a great conversation. But before that, I wanted to acknowledge, we've got every council staff has been, is represented here, so I don't want to go through everyone, but we're going to see from some in a little bit. But a special shout out to two of our incredible central staff colleagues. First, Jelani Valdez, who is our central staff director, she is an absolutely amazing public servant. We love working with her, and she leads this body with honor and distinction, so thank you. She's also a native of the Dominican Republic. And secondly, I wanted to give a special shout out. I mentioned that my mother taught at Blessed Sacrament School. One of her favorite students was the daughter of Juan Lopez, who has been working with us with central staff, a Cuban-American, a man who is a mentor to so many of us, including me. And Juan is now the longest-serving Latino member of city government. He has been a public servant in the city of Boston for 40 years. He obviously started when he was six years old, because he's still so youthful. But Juan, congratulations and great to be with all of you. Also, I wanted to acknowledge on behalf of Mayor Janey, her ONS liaison, Jesús García Mota, welcome, Jesús, thank you, as well as Natalia Artebe, who's Director of Small Business, welcome Natalia, always great to see you. And we're going to have more folks come, so if I haven't given you a shout out yet, I'm sure we will. But that's all we have for the brief opening. I guess Kerry, if you are ready, special shout out to Kerry Jordan, Candace Morales, who, well, you're going to see their handiwork in a moment, but I think, folks, if we're ready to start the video, let's have it. Buenos días a todos. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Matt O'Malley. I'm so proud and honored to be the Boston City Council President pro tempore, and I am truly honored as the council recognizes Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city of Boston. I wanted to begin by thanking my two co-hosts, At-Large City Counselor Julia Mejia and District Five City Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, two wonderful partners in government for the work, great members of our body. You know, we've seen a lot of great changes this year in Boston, and it's really important to recognize what is our strength, which is the diversity and vibrancy of our city. And I am particularly proud of the Latinx and Hispanic community here in Boston, which accounts for nearly one out of every five Bostonians. Representing District Six, the last 11 years, I've had the incredible honor of representing the neighborhoods I grew up in. And among my very many happy memories around the holidays, were attending mass at Blessed Sacrament Church in Jamaica Plain, where my mother taught at the school, for a bilingual Christmas Eve mass every year. You see, what's really important as we celebrate this incredible culture is to recognize the leaders of our community. You're going to be hearing from many of them, from all main neighborhoods, from all districts throughout this program. So once again, I just wanted to say thank you for this incredible opportunity. It is so important that we celebrate Hispanic Heritage this and every month here in the city of Boston. Here's to a great virtual program, and I can't wait till we're back together in person next year.
This is District Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, and it's my great honor and pleasure to introduce the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration for the Boston City Council. I'd like to thank my two co-sponsors on this, Julia Mejia and Matt O'Malley. This is a great day to celebrate our culture, our heritage. It's a great privilege for me, as somebody who is of Hispanic descent, to represent the Hispanic and Latino community here on this council. And it's a wonderful day to appreciate and give a special thank you to those of us who are of Hispanic descent, who work on the council, who make sure that this place moves and ticks and does all the work in the people's business here. And I also want to thank you, if you're watching this, whether you're Hispanic or not, if you're Hispanic, thank you for the contributions you've done to our city. If you're not, thank you for taking the time to honor those who are Hispanic who have made those contributions.
Hello, everyone. This is Counselor At-Large Julia Mejia, coming to you for Hispanic Heritage Month. Super excited to be joining this month. As you know, Latinos are the largest population of immigrants here in the city of Boston, and we have business owners from barber shops, so here's a lot, food to restaurants, and so much more. Latinos are making a name for themselves here. And in case you didn't know, this is the first time in our history that we've had more than one Latino serving on the council at the same time. And lastly, I want to give a shout out to two amazing Latinas that are part of our office, Sister Mayes and Sandra Severa, for all they can do to serve the community and so much more. Thank you. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month to you all.
Hola a todo el mundo, es la concejal Julia Mejia. Estoy super orgullosa de estar aquí hoy celebrando con Tévez el mes de la herencia hispana. Tévez sabe que la comunidad Latina es una comunidad más grande de inmigrantes aquí en la ciudad de Boston. Tenemos gentes que son barberos, salones, restaurantes, comerciantes aquí en la ciudad de Boston, que deben de estar desarrollando nuestra ciudad. Y otra cosa más, es la primera vez en nuestra historia que tenemos más de una persona que es paro trabajando aquí como concejal en la ciudad de Boston. Y últimamente le quiero dar un súper agradecimiento a mis dos empleados que trabajan en mi oficina, Sister Mayes y Sandra Severa, por todo su trabajo, que hace todo lo guía para seguir a nuestra comunidad. Muchas felicidades para el mes de la herencia hispana, y lo quiero muchísimo.
The Latino community in Boston means everything to me. I remember my days growing up in Boston in the Villa Victoria, and how in the Villa Victoria in the Blackstone Elementary School, my identity was reinforced, and I was always taught to treat others with kindness and respect.
Yo soy Rosanna Rivera. He trabajado en esta comunidad por más de 25 años, y los cuales he ayudado, organizado y motivado a otros comerciantes a trabajar juntos para así construir una mejor comunidad en Iglesias Naciones. Me he esforzado por conocer la mayoría de los vecinos, me parte el alma ver tantos desamparados por culpa de su adicción y sus traumas. Latino más que un salón de belleza es una familia donde todos son bienvenidos, no solo para recibir un servicio, también si necesitas un abrazo, si necesitas una oración o una buena comida. Agradezco a Michelle Wood por reconocer mi trabajo social y celebrar con nosotros el mes de la herencia hispana. Muchas gracias.
Hi, my name is Minor Pérez. I am an immigrant from Guatemala. I am very proud to be a Latino and very proud to be a union member. I work for the largest construction union in Boston and throughout the United States, the Carpenter Union. I'm also the liaison to Boston City Hall for the Carpenter Union. What I love the most about my job is it gives me the opportunity to help all Bostonians and new Bostonians. I believe there is many social programs that can help a person thrive in this life. However, I do focus on what I believe to be the best social program. Giving a person a job, giving a person a career. To me, that is very important. At this moment, I want to wish everybody a happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Saludos amigos, soy Luis Bravo, editor del periódico El Heraldo Latino. Primero que todo quiero darles las gracias a la señora Lydia Edwards, concejada de Boston, quien ahora es candidata para senadora del estado por el primer distrito de Zoológico y Murosex. Segundo, quiero felicitar a todos los hispanos de España, Centroamérica, Suramérica, y el Caribe, que vivimos en los Estados Unidos, por la celebración de la herencia hispana, que ya es una, que viene realizándose como una tradición por 53 años consecutivos. Esta es una celebración que se realiza del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre, y es importante ya que se celebra la participación, los aportes, los logros y las contribuciones de nuestra presencia en este país. Bien, los invito a que disfruten de este mes conociendo la cultura, la gastronomía, arte, música, y tradiciones de nuestros países hermanos. Un abrazo fraterno, les habló Luis Bravo.
Hello, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. My name is Lydia Rivera. I was born and raised in Boston, and I am of Colombian and Puerto Rican descent. I am proud to be part of the Hispanic fabric here in Boston, and blessed to have grown up in the wonderful community of Dorchester. A career at the MBTA, a Labor Degree from UMass Boston, along with the many mentors and friendships, I was able to grow and realize my professional dreams. Today, I am principal of Lid Riv Communications, a minority and women-owned business. I also host a podcast called Building Boston &amp; Beyond, focused on ensuring residents across Massachusetts are aware of what's going on in their community and what resources are available to them. I come from a family of public servants. Learning English from listening to vinyls, my mother Clara Rivera worked for the city of Boston under Mayor Ray Flynn. My mother too is a dreamer. If there are opportunities and resources, failure to seize them is not an option. Thank you, Mom. I leave with you my favorite Spanish proverb, si te caes, si te veses, levántate ocho.
Regla González. National Hispanic Heritage Month is a good time to learn the facts about life realities for millions of Latinos in the United States. That is the only way to celebrate the many contributions made to our country and understand the challenges we're fighting to change. We celebrate the Latinos accounted for 51% of a nation's growth during the past decade, and we're now the most multiracial group in the United States. To meet the significance of National Hispanic Heritage Month, it is an important reminder of how much a strength we draw as a nation from our immigrant roots and our values as a nation of immigrants.
Hi, my name is Milagros Marte. I come from Dominican Republic. I've been living in Boston over 30 years and a host and radio producer, and also leader in our community. I appreciate the city council speaking me to that recognition. What's important for us, this month's celebration, because we can share our cultural tradition and how rich traditions we are. We are very hard work person, and we're glad to live in Boston and be part of that wonderful city. Thank you so much again, and I can do better in Spanish, I promise. Gracias.
When an immigrant says goodbye to the land of origin, most likely misses his family, his friends, his food, his language and traditions. However, he never loses his heritage, his knowledge from past generations. 60 years ago, when I arrived from Cuba to the United States, to this city, Boston has given me the opportunity to acquire knowledge and to develop skills to become successful in many enterprises. In the last 43 years, my work in radio and in television has allowed me to promote and to preserve the Hispanic heritage, to create awareness of the important values in life, to protect our democracy, the face in mankind, the love for family and nature, and especially our faith for God. I want to thank the city, especially Michael Flaherty, to celebrate Hispanic heritage and to make aware the contributions that we have made to this city and to this country.
Hi, my name is Alberto Basalo. I arrived from Cuba to this country in 1965 as a refugee, a country that I love so much and I call home. I was able to fulfill my American dream, was able also to educate my childrens in very, very good universities, and only through my hard, very hard work. I was the founder of Al Mundo Newspaper, expanding radio personality and a producer as well. But more important, a community activist and the recipient of 120 public recognition. 42 majors are, honorary cause degree in humanitarian from Cambridge College, a Cambridge Square name after me, and a national recognition for American by show, for being an American by show. That was a very, very important recognition that I really, I really appreciate. Most recently, I was recognized as one of the most important pioneer of the community. I've always worked for the progress of the community, and I will continue to do so until I die. Thank you, Councilor Matt O'Malley, for being, for nominating me, and thank you to the city of Boston.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marcos Veleche. I am the executive director of Four Corners Main Street Program here in Dorchester. In this capacity, I'm responsible for supporting and connecting our local small business community team to resources offered by the city of Boston, as well as other opportunities that can help further their goals and success. Four Corners Main Street, however, is more than that. Our own history and founding are embedded in community activism, and resident leaders continue to help shape our work agenda alongside local merchants. We have our hands on many ongoing efforts to impact the success of our business district and the quality of life of local residents, including transportation equity, environmental justice, youth jobs, community placemaking, and cultural events. I want to say that I'm very grateful for this recognition. I am surprised and honored, especially given what I already received from work and community. As an immigrant in my own land, I also want to say that this recognition honors those who have come before me and those who have yet to come. I grew up in a farmworker family along the US-Mexico border, and one of my earliest experiences and memories in this country goes back to when I did not know the English language. I was accused of something at school and was unable to defend myself. For a brief moment, I had no voice, I felt helpless, hopeless, and angry. As a result of this experience and recognizing that it's very easy to be excluded, creating a space for other voices to be heard has been central to my work. This past year and a half of supporting immigrant small business owners during a pandemic highlighted how critical it is to be present, accessible to those with least access. Whether it's presiding over our board of directors or coordinating a local community garden, I appreciate the opportunity to bring other voices along. This has not only allowed me to be wonderful people and leaders, it has also helped my own development. And so my message to all those who share in the work of community is very simple. Gracias y si se puede. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Jose Fabio Maso, and today we are here to honor my father, Jose Carmelo Maso III. My father is mostly known for his contributions to 46 years of radio programming on his show, ConSasa. He's also known for his many contributions throughout the community. Mentorship, advocacy, music, and culture, he leaves a positive impact on everyone he comes across. My father is a presence, and his positive energy is felt wherever he goes. His commitment to his life's purpose, in addition to his commitment to his family, has been a blessing to us all. My mom and dad have been able to stand on the shoulders of giants, and because of them, me and my generation are able to do the same. Thankful for generations of service leaders, and thankful to council of rule for this recognition. We are grateful.
Soy Jackalin Péguel. Tengo 30 años viviendo en esta ciudad donde me he destacado por hacer el voluntariado con diferentes organizaciones como la Roberto Clemente, a nivel de softball, la Liga Fradeco a nivel de baloncesto, organizando eventos deportivos con ambos, así como formando parte de Barilejos Unidos en el exterior, organizando el convite en Barilejo, de el que fui presidenta por siete años, así como de otras actividades culturales. También trabajé con el... También trabajé con el Dominican Native Women Woman, organizando las conferencias internacionales de mujeres, y también he participado en otras actividades del quehacer de la ciudad como la política, entre otros muchos. Muy orgullosa de ser latina y de ser dominicana.
My name is Myra Duran. I am from Dominican Republic. I am the community lead organizer of Great Four Corners for the last fourteen years. I help work on housing issues, foreclosure, eviction, displacement, and housing bills. Housing stability is my main focus, especially with all the new developments happening in the Boston area. I'm proud to be an honorary as it helps me to show the Latin community that anything is possible.
Hola familia bostoniana. Happy Latinx Heritage Month to all. I want to thank Mayor Janey, Council President O'Malley, Councilor Mejia, and Councilor Arroyo for this recognition and for their ongoing support of our work. Zero Debt Massachusetts was created two years ago to protect student borrowers and fight for investments in public higher education, and the creation of a debt-free post-secondary educational system free of student debt. In the last two years, Zero Debt Massachusetts activists were instrumental in passing the Student Law Borrowers Bill of Rights at the state legislature, and also working with the Boston City Council to call on President Biden to cancel all student debt. Student debt is preventing our young people from starting families, buying homes, going to graduate school, and starting their own businesses. Muchas gracias por este reconocimiento y feliz mes de herencia hispana a todos.
Hello, my name is Carlos Espinoza Toro, and I am the Director of Small Business Services at JPNDC. During the pandemic, JPNDC provided technical assistance to 194 businesses. We know that from those 194 businesses, 178 survived, which is a great rate of 92% of survival. I'm still very proud to have worked with all of these vision holders. They have shown me how resilient they are, how they are very willing to work, to survive and to thrive during the pandemic. We are grateful for the extraordinary support of the Commonwealth of the State of Massachusetts, and also for prior funders like the Boston Foundation and the National Association for Latino Community Affairs.
Hola, mi nombre es Claudia Claviosorio. Soy uruguaya y vivo aquí en Sabo. Llegué a esta gran nación en el año 2000 con mi hijo Gustín de tres meses buscando un mejor futuro. Al poco tiempo tuve a mi segundo hijo Gastón. No fue fácil, pero como todos los hispanos nos caracterizamos por ser trabajadores, educados y ayudar al prójimo, yo me convertí en voluntaria en mi tiempo libre. Por muchos años he sido voluntaria en mi comunidad y he trabajado en diferentes organizaciones. Ser voluntario es una experiencia única y satisfactoria que reconforta el corazón. Ser voluntaria me ha dado el privilegio de crear lazos con la comunidad hispana y americana en Sabo. Siendo voluntaria aprendí muchas cosas sobre nosotros los hispanos. Tenemos la capacidad de sonreír aun en medio de dificultades y de saltar cualquier obstáculo por difícil que sea. Sabemos de dónde venimos y a dónde vamos, y estamos forjando nuevos caminos porque somos luchadores y emprendedores. Estoy orgullosa de ser hispana, orgullosa de aquellos que con esmeros se han encargado de crecer y aportar lo mejor de ellos a este bello país. Por nuestros hijos soñadores y líderes del mañana, celebraremos nuestra cultura, idioma y logro. Muchas gracias. Bye.
My name is Dante Luna. I'm a mixed media storyteller from Rosendale High Park in the city of Boston. I say I'm a son of Boston. I'm Puerto Rican and Dominican. My mom is Puerto Rican and my dad is Dominican. I graduated from High Park High. I left High Park High and I photographed forty-eight of fifty states. I still have Alaska and Hawaii left. I finished my bachelor's degree when I was twenty years old. YouTube was just two years old when I started making videos, and I fell in love with the idea of on-demand media, with being able to package an idea, make it tangible, you know, put it on the internet, have a YouTube link that I can send out. I take a lot of pride in helping people, you know, visualize the best of themselves. Where I'm from, a lot of my friends felt like their potential was limited to wherever the orange line could take them to, you know, because when we get on the orange line, we see Forest Hills. That was my station, Forest Hills. When you see Forest Hills, you see Old Grove, and you think Old Grove is where your potential stops. So being a person of color that has unlimited ambition and enthusiasm for their dreams is something that took me my whole life to appreciate and to love about myself. I love Boston. I love being a part of Boston's story and, you know, I'm honored to be a part of Boston's growth.
Hi, my name is Pilar Ortiz, and I live in Brighton. I think one of the reasons that the Hispanic community in Boston is so special is because we're from all over the place. Our families have different backgrounds, but it's here in Boston that we find community with each other. Whether we're in a park and you see a birthday party happening with all the tías sitting in a circle, or a family down the street is cooking carne asada in the backyard, I've had the experience of everyone opening their homes, their coolers, their grills to each other, to complete strangers. And it's here that we find that new family, even when we're far away from so many others.
Hi, my name is Carlos Castillo, and I'm an entrepreneur and small business owner here in Boston. In short, a dreamer. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Frank Baker for this honor to an Hispanic Heritage Month. It's city councils like him that enabled my small business to thrive in this great city of Boston. I'm first-generation American, of Dominican descent. I was born in Roxbury and grew up in Dorchester. My parents met here at UMass Boston, and as soon as they had an opportunity to buy their first home, we went from the projects to a triple decker. I attribute a lot of my success to growing up in Boston and being exposed to so many cultures. I started my business right here in Dorchester on the street where I grew up, Hamilton. I went from working at Hamilton Hardware through high school to buying and renovating triple deckers on Hamilton Street. This is a great month to be Latino, to inspire Latinos to be proud to be Hispanic and embrace our culture. My mom always tells me, "Nosotros venimos aquí para progresar. Nosotros venimos de muy abajo y solamente para hacer que vayamos." He came to this country to progress, and we come from the bottom, and we're only going up. Every Hispanic in the United States in this great city of Boston can achieve the American dream. Aim high, shoot for the stars, pay it forward, help every Hispanic. Gracias, Frank. Gracias, Boston.
My name is Milagro De Los Santos. I lived on Mission Hill, Mission Main Settlement for twenty-one years. Everybody, most of everybody in the community knows me as Millie. I go to Mission Church, and I belong to two committees at the Mission Church. I belong to the NHS. Whatever volunteer work they do, I try to be there to help the community out, especially. The main one is in Maria Sanchez's house, and one girl is three. They do the Thanksgiving dinner, and we work there, you know, with a New England Baptist to help serve the lunch for the seniors. And I worked for Chero House for thirty-four years, and I have four lives at Chero House. I worked, volunteered, I was a patient twice, and now I'm a family member. Okay?
Hello, hello, community. Hope everybody's doing well. Thank you for joining today. Councilor Arroyo, thank you so much for your leadership and the work that you have done, continue to do, and still have left, right? As a Maripan resident, I'm really excited that you are our leader here in Maripan and that you continue to fight for what's right. I'm Nouris Camargo. I am the founder of Chica Project, an organization that was created now ten years ago to empower and inspire young Latinas and other women of color to connect and to thrive personally, professionally, and to really have the tools and the network needed to be ready for that leadership and that next generation, right? Maybe the next mayor, the next city council, the next congresswoman, the next district attorney, right? So that's what we do at Chica Project. Make sure you follow them at Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, chicaproject.org. Thank you, thank you so much. Que Dios los bendiga. Muchísimas gracias.
Hola, everyone. My name is Jesús García, and I'm the Latino liaison for the city of Boston. I've been working in the office on our services for the past three years. And as Latino liaison, one of my functions is to be the point of contact between the Latino community and the city of Boston in order to make sure that the Latinos understand or are aware, know about the different services and processes that the city provides for all the residents. Right now, we are celebrating the Hispanic Heritage Month, and the meaning of the Hispanic Heritage Month for me is that it's a great opportunity to continue with the engagement of all the diverse Latinos that will live in the city of Boston and do our part to continue to unite each one of us different countries that we are represented here in the city of Boston. And I think it's also a great opportunity to show the different backgrounds, traditions, and cultures that we have, and how rich we are as Latinos, and we come together here during this Hispanic Heritage Month 2021. So congratulations to all the my Latinos in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Well, let's hear it for, let's hear it for everybody. That was absolutely fabulous. Thank you so much, Kerry Jordan, who was our producer and did an amazing job. Thank you so much. Candace Morales, who was our associate producer, helped with that. Absolutely great, wonderful, wonderful job. I want to, I saw my friend Gladys Oliveria as well. I know we may have her video a little bit later, so bear with us on that for one thing. But before we get to that, just wanted to acknowledge, Councilor Wu has joined us. Yes, Councilor Wu, would you like to say any words of greeting?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone. We, of course, are missing the chance to be together, but I'm really grateful that thanks to your leadership and Councilors Mejia and Arroyo, we are still getting the chance to celebrate our incredible community and the superstars, a few of the superstars within it. So I'm really grateful to be part of this council and this ongoing tradition. So just wanted to say, very, very excited to see you, and next year, we will do this in splendid style.
Well said. Thank you very much. Welcome, Councilor Wu. And we've also been joined by Councilor Andrea Campbell. Welcome, Councilor Campbell. I credited you in the opening of doing a wonderful in-person event when you were council president. Glad to continue it virtually, and as Councilor Wu said, look forward to doing it again in person next year. But Councilor Campbell, welcome.
Thank you. I just had a suit jacket on, and I just threw that off because I said, "We're all hanging out. We're celebrating." This is so exciting. And thank you, Councilor O'Malley, for your leadership. Thank you to central staff, of course, for helping to pull it together. And thank you to Councilors Ricardo Arroyo, Porres, and Julia Mejia for organizing it, bringing us all together. And congratulations to all the honorees, not just those from my district who my entire team loves, but to everyone for the work you do every single day to support all of our communities, not just those who are in the Latino Latinx community. So thank you so very much. Congratulations to everyone, and a special shout-out to my Chief of Staff, Ellie. I love you. You make us better, particularly not just during this month, all year, on the issues that affect this community. So love you, lady. Thank you, Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you very much. And it's so great to hear you. I think I see one of our colleagues from the state delegation, Rep. Randy Fluker Oakley, Representative. Thank you so much for joining us. If you want to say hello, we'd love to, we'd love to see you and hear you.
Thank you so much, Councilor O'Malley. Hello, city of Boston colleagues and to our whole Latinx community. I just want to say thank you so much for making this celebration happen virtually, and thank you so much for your contributions, not only through September fifteenth and October fifteenth, but truly all year round. We are better because of you, and I'm glad we were able to to celebrate you just a little bit this afternoon.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I do apologize, Councilor Edwards, if you're still on. I know Gladys is someone we all know well. Somehow, the video was inadvertently not included in the final product, but if you wanted to introduce Gladys, and Gladys, if you wanted to talk a little bit about yourself, just so we can properly honor you along with the amazing other honorees. Welcome. Hey, Gladys, how are you? Great to see you. So, Councilor Edwards, do you want to, great to see you. Do you want to introduce Gladys, and we'll hear from her?
Yes, it's absolutely my honor to introduce Gladys Oliveros, who is a longtime resident of East Boston from Colombia, who has demonstrated, I think, the American dream. She's not only come here, she grew here, and she also is now leading here in East Boston as the head of East Boston Main Street. She is really providing the bridge for our local economy between local restaurants owned by Latinos in East Boston and restaurants owned by our traditional Italians and folks who are just coming in from all over the place. They go to Gladys because Gladys knows how to build bridges and build businesses. So Gladys, it is my honor to introduce you, to say a couple of words, and thank you so much. And it's just an honor to recognize you. just an honor to recognize you and all of your work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is an honor, and so, wow, I'm surprised for this, believe me. And thank you to you, Counselor Edwards, and also thank you to all you who made this possible. Okay? And no, you know, I had nothing to say. I'm here in East Boston for you all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gladys. Well said. Sorry about the video, but this was even more special. And I can tell you enough campaign experience, anyone running for office knows, one of the first calls you make is to Gladys because she is a potent powerhouse in and of herself. So listen again to our honorees: Dante Luna, Nouris Camargo, Lydia Rivera, Carlos Castillo, Ifrain Toledoano, Milli De Los Santos, Pilar Ortiz, Alba Oliver, Marcos Veleche, Mayra Duran, Luis Bravo, Gladys Oliveros, Regla Gonzales, Jose García Mota, Milargos Marte, Peter Cuenca, Mayna Perez, Claudio Osorio, JP NC, specifically Carlos Espinoza Toro, and ZDM Claudio Martinez, Alberto Vasallo, my hermana Jacqueline Peguero, Jose Maso, and Rosana Rivera. Congratulations, felicidades. Thank you for all you do for our city. This was just a wonderful event, and we have a couple minutes left. So if any of our honorees wish to say anything, just raise your hand, and we're happy to, we're happy to hear from you in our waning minutes. It's been great to be together. So please, if anyone wishes to speak, you don't have to, but you may do so if you'd like. Just raise your hand and let me know. All right. Well, seeing no takers. I will just conclude before turning it over to Councilors Mejia and Arroyo once again. Well, let me start with them. Counselor, Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours, and then Counselor Arroyo, and then we'll, we'll close things up. I think Counselor Mejia has written such a beautiful tribute showcasing the brilliance of our culture here, here. Absolutely. Counselor Ricardo, do you have any other concluding remarks?
Hey, everybody. Just want to say, one, thank you to the central staff for all the work that they do. I wish we had videos of you, too. That's the one edit I'll make in the future. But in terms of the video, thank you so much, Kerry. You're fantastic. You do so much for the council. Deeply appreciate you. And for everybody who received an honor today, thank you so much for the work that you all do every day in the city. I can't say enough good words about the work that all of you do. Some of y'all are legends, and some of y'all are on the way to legendary status. And so thank you very much to all of you.
Well said. Well said. Thank you. Counselor Mejia, do you want to say something to before?
Yes, I just wanted to say it was so inspiring, and I felt like a sense of like pride to see so many of our people showcasing all the brilliance that we bring to, to the city of Boston. So thank you so much for, for putting this together, Counselor O'Malley, and Arroyo, working alongside our office to make it happen. But this is what it looks like when we're all in community, and so incredibly grateful for the beautiful tribute. And big shout out to central staff for always bringing it. Thank you so very much.
Well said. And again, I can't top what my two colleagues said, other than to absolutely agree. This has been an incredibly powerful, inspiring hour. Having worked with so many of you, known so many of you, just seeing the passion and action of that passion that you all have brought to our city is simply remarkable. We are a far better city because of each and every one of you, and it has been a true honor to be, be one of your voices at City Hall. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. This concludes our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. The month ends today, but we know we celebrate it this month and every month as we should in our great city. Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon. It's so great to be with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.